...to follow with the regular meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, October 1, 2019, in the council chambers at 803 West Holland of City of Alpine, Texas, for the purpose of considering the tax agenda. This notice pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 5099, Article 43, Texas Government Code. Public notice, the use of cellular phones are prohibited in the city council chambers during meetings of the city council. Members of the audience, we provide an opportunity to assist the council during public hearings and during action items. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address, and if you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the city secretary. Stay logged in, prohibited to consult or discuss or take any action on any issue that's not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer them as to staff. No personal attacks from council members or city staff will be allowed. Mayor and/or city council members may call a point order to stop the personal attacks. The individual continues to personally attack, and elected official or staff member in the meeting, they may be barred. Okay. Now, call is beginning to order, and we don't have time to give the application unless...
Not until we get together at 5:30.
At 5:30, okay, so we'll skip that then, and also a pledge, I guess. Okay, city secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum, and Councilor Escobar will call if she was running late, but would be here. The agenda was posted at 2:00 PM on September 27, 2019.
And this is a workshop, and I'll turn it to you, city members.
Hello, mayor, and city council, thank you. We've got board discussion today, our board and commissions, workshop discussion. Councilor Stevens has put together a nice PowerPoint. He'll walk us through. I'll try and change slides for you, Councilor Stevens.
Great. That's all right. So, you have your packet and ten slides on this subject. It was all aimed at the discussion that Councilman Escobedo brought up to us at our last meeting a couple days ago. We said, in this meeting, we talk about boards and commissions. And two weeks ago, it's very much like an operator, it's getting started, we'll talk about roads on October 15th, and then we'll leave that. The first slide says board and commission training. I use stuff I've used before. It should say board and commission discussion. And so I put these nine or ten slides together, all aimed at making sure we all have the same baseline on boards and commissions, the background, because boards and commissions are actually all delineated in city ordinances. And I'll get to the specifics on the city ordinances there. There have been a number of questions raised. Lucy raised some. I've gotten a bunch of other inputs as well. We're going to get to those on the second to last charts, which would be chart number eight and nine, that thought worked well, we're kind of off in the background of that perspective. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the outcome that we won out of this is, particularly when we get into discussion, are there things that we should consider changing in our ordinances? And if there are things we should consider changing in ordinances, I think there are some specific things that might apply to specific boards and commissions. There are others that might apply to all boards and commissions. I talked to Cynthia Erle this week about what a strategy might be, and the strategy would be, if we want to make a change, then we probably want to put together an ordinance change, then we bring in for the first reading, they would say, propose the following draft changes to the ordinances. And then we'd have the first reading of that, do a public hearing, and then come back and do all those in one ordinance. And the reason doing it in one ordinance, as you recall, we have six boards and commissions. In theory, we could do six different ordinances. My view, that's a lot of overhead. We just ought to do it all in one, we can do it in one ordinance. So that's kind of the background of the purpose behind this discussion. Makes sense? Okay, so with that, Eric, why don't you go on to the next slide? And I'll kind of walk through some. My intent was to write an overview, kind of some background. I also thought we ought to talk about responsibilities of the chairs, because we at council have defined responsibilities of the chairs, what responsibility members are, make sure we're lined up with what the city secretary does, and then dive into the city, into the topics themselves. So, city ordinance has established the boards and commissions. Rather than the next page, the actual last page, number 10, back there, if you want to click all the way to the back of it. Keep going. Should be one more on there. Maybe I didn't put it in there. Ah, probably should have put it in there. The last page here and out is an Excel spreadsheet that really is by chapter, the authority, the membership, the qualifications, the term, the chair selection, the meeting frequency, and the miss manual, which is kind of what it is for a form. So that's kind of the background of the information. I didn't intend to walk through to that in detail. Suffice to say, all of those are defined in ordinances, and if we want to make changes, we have to go change the appropriate ordinance. And the specific reference is delineated in there. For example, the planning, it's only commission, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Article 2, it talks about the number of qualifications and all that. So that's background. And in most cases, we've seen this before, but I thought it worked well, including this particular information. All of this information is available online as well. Okay?
Just real quick on that, if I may.
Yeah.
Within your term ends, so does the term of all of your board and commissions. So if you choose to continue to keep them on there, we have to put in all the agenda for you guys to approve that, and then they need to get to each other.
Yes.
That's not happening, you know, you go concurrent, you know, two, three years, and they keep going.
Keep on going.
But if we're doing this correctly, that's what we need to make.
Yeah. And to Cynthia's point, their two-year terms concurrent with whoever nominates them. There is no term limit though. So we term limit out after three terms. Boards and commissions, there is no term limit. However, to Cynthia's point, they get re-swording every other year. Okay, based upon when we come on board, as council members come on board. And of course, council has the authority to remove members. We are the only ones that can remove members. There are some, and we'll get into this discussion a little bit later on, there are some boards and commission chairs who would like to remove members because they're not showing up. And we do, in fact, have defined the number of times people, if they miss, then they have to run it up, and it's really up to us to go work that. So we as boards and commission members can go work that. I see she's finding her...
I'm trying to take the hell out of people off my board if they start showing up.
Yeah. So, but that's, so we as council members knew that, but that's part of the dialogue that we need to have here. We also said, you know, we would appoint the chairs, so we as the council appoint the chairs. It used to be that the chairs were appointed by the respective boards. But we appoint them, and as you recall, Cynthia has on the slate, we ask them to come forward every quarter, give us an update. So we're up to speed on what they're doing. You've heard from Airport Advisory Board, you've heard from the Parks Board, you've heard from a number of them. I think we're first of all, except for one board, and that's the Environmental Board. And that is, we've not had utilities director around for a long time, so they've not met. And Tammy New is the chair for that, but she's been looking for having a counterpart within the city she can go out and study with. Okay? And the other is, they too have to follow the Texas Open Meeting Act and the Roberts Rule of Order, which provide the board requirements and guidelines. Then a lot of discussion about total whether they need to follow or not, but since they meet, and they meet to represent citizenry, and they give us recommendation, they do need to meet the Texas Open Meetings Act, and they have to take training as well. Okay? Questions on that? Okay. Now, here it is, this, here's the next page that goes reflected on the, on that last page. Here are words reflected in terms of the coordinate ordinances, applicable to all boards and commissions, Chapter 2, Administration, Planning and Zoning, talks about the membership. You'll notice that each of them have different members. Some have seven with a quorum of four, some have five with a quorum of three. When you get down to building and standards, they have five members, two alternates, and therefore only a quorum of three. So it's a majority of the, of the membership, but we have different representation for each of them. One of the thoughts is, should we make them all the same? I think there's some pluses and minuses, and we're going to get back to that a little bit later on, but I think it's worthwhile to keep this in your hip pocket relative to page four, when we come back and talk about specifics. Eric?
Yeah. One of the things that Chris Rujia and I talked about as well, the, certainly the growing tourism that we have in the community, and some of the heightened awareness around the hotel occupancy tax, and how that fund is distributed. Would it be worth for council to contemplate adding a ward that is providing oversight and the recommendations around, to council, around the hotel occupancy tax? And, you know, bringing in that, you know, that size may be a little larger than five, but having a couple key hoteliers and having some representation for each ward as well. So maybe through this process, that, that could be created as well.
So I just added on our list for discussion, we get to a, I'll call right now this, but a hot committee.
Perfect. Yep, perfect. Thank you.
So, unless you want to dive into the details, which I didn't think you want to do, but this, again, gives you a handy reference to the number of members, what's a quorum, and how do they, how do they work? I think airport advisory, parks and recreation, beautification environment, and planning and zoning are relatively straightforward. They're simple, average amount of members, and then a majority of the forum. Building and standards is unique, because they're actually a judicial body. They can take action without approval of council. All of the others require approval of council, so they're making recommendations. You see Animal Advisory Board has representations now from each ward, Aved, Humane Society, and City Council, plus an ex officio member of animal control. So there are some uniquenesses associated with some of them, but that's, so again, that's kind of the background. And my sense is, they got put together based upon the need at the time. I don't think any of them got formed all at once. So, if we go on to the next page, which is the responsibilities of the chair, so these are the ground rules that we all agree to, to really ask the chair to take a leadership role, in terms of knowledge, understanding of the charter, but at least meet with us. We set on an annual basis, they're now meeting with us quarterly, almost all of them except for one. They set their board or commission meeting dates, they set their agenda, and they work to coordinate any potential issues, including items they may want to bring forward to the city council. You know, they make sure they get their meetings published, they make sure they have a quorum present, they follow Toma, and they do go through Toma training, and they prepare minutes, and in the case of wards, Cynthia participates in building and standards and planning and zoning. And you submit, participate in any others, you do.
No. I mean, not officially, I do sit in on the majority of them.
Yeah.
But I'm not officially...
Yeah, and those two you sit on, one, because it's judicial, and they have to have legal minutes that could go to court. In fact, if there's an appeal against building and standards, it actually goes to district court. That's the next level. It doesn't come to us, it goes to district court for adjudication. Planning and zoning, because of the rules we have and all that, that tie back to what goes on in the city, and, you know, we have an item on our agenda tonight, planning and zoning, Cynthia's involved in that, make sure we've got all the requirements there. Questions on that? Okay. Responsible of the members, you know, this is the challenge I think we face across all boards and commissions, making sure they understand and respect the charters, what their role and mission is, you know, make sure they're working the items before they come to the meetings, attend the meetings, and make recommendations about potential items. I know in some of the boards and commissions that I stay close to, which is planning and zoning, airport advisory, and building and standards, one of the things they've done is, once they actually set a regular date during the month that they will meet, their attendance improved dramatically. That was an important part of getting everyone lined up, because otherwise, who was well sure to meet or should not meet, and they're in it, as opposed to, if they're going to meet the third, you know, Thursday of the month, people can plan on it, no different than we do, we plan on the first and the third Tuesdays in the month, so that made a big difference going forward. The other thing I think is important from the boards and commissions, they all have someone at the city who, for lack of a name, staffs them.
Yes.
Animal Advisory Board, you know, in terms of janitorial, building and standards.
Sorry for the...
It's okay.
Hello.
Hi, how you doing? Some of the beans get out of the back office there? Nope.
Sorry.
It's okay. They all have someone staffed, so the building inspector staffs up planning and zoning, as well as building and standards. Airport Advisory Board, whoever's responsible, the city goes in and staffs that. As I mentioned earlier, environmental is staffed by utilities director, and who am I missing? Parks is...
Parks is our public works.
Parks is public works, right, yeah.
Or Robert Yanis, our supervisor, he's been attending all of the...
So the good news is, they've got them all, and I think once we get building inspector back on board, and a public utilities director on board, then those meetings can continue on. I know that there's been some stalls in both of those. The next page just talks about the role that Cynthia has, you know, it's defined in the whole world charter, our charter, Section 4, Article 3, defines what Cynthia's responsibility is, but when it comes to important elements, particularly to the city, which involves city seal and minutes, and complying with the laws, I said, because building and standards, that is a judicial body. They've got records they've got to maintain that are kept, and because, you know, building standards is actually, has directed, turned out of buildings, or they can direct the citizen to take actions, and all those get leads against property depending upon, you know, what's, what's going on, driven by safety, that's the biggest issue, is driven by safety to the community.
So the planning and zoning commission as well.
Yep.
Really, Cynthia, you know, the city secretary, really has to go to both commission events a lot, because if planning and zoning commission has a recommendation to make to council, if it's an affirmative recommendation, then council only has to pass with a simple majority. But if planning and zoning does not recommend, it still comes up to council, but then you have to have a super majority for you to have to take the term. So it's important that she's, she's there for full city documentation and fix the city seal.
And I think, well, it's interesting, in both of those, showing standards and planning and zoning, probably the biggest issue, and Cynthia, you can correct me on that, but the biggest issue they run into is, what's the name of the legal entity that they're talking about? So, we all have addresses, right? That we live, we get a mail to? That's not the legal entity. The legal name is, in fact, how it's documented in the tax records. So both commissions and boards have spent some time sorting through that, and finally settled in on, it's the name of the legal entity as affixed by the Brewster County Tax Assessor. That's how it's described, because they work their way through. In addition, there happens to be an address on top of it, but for example, in my house, I have three addresses at my house, okay? One for the US Post Office, one for the city from a utility standpoint, and one from AEP for electricity, and all three were different. And so the only legal entity is the one which is described in the tax office, and that happens more often than not in the city, and we would like to think of. So, that's any sample of the issue. So Cynthia has really been working to make sure that when they get into those, they've got this whole proper document. It's one of the reasons why we here at council, including when we talk about the White G D A, because we, as we have that special today, it's all about how it's defined legally, not how it's defined by the US Post Office or anything.
And that causes an issue, because when they're trying to send documents to them, to actually show up, building and standard vehicles are carrying to any actions, it all comes back undeliverable, because we have the wrong address, because we did not go through the municipal district. We were actually taking a physical address of 803 West Holland, instead of looking at the, whatever registered with the CAD. So that's caused a lot of issues, and it delays building and standards trying to do their work, because they...
And would certainly hate to have an impact on a building that was the wrong one.
Yes. And a perfectly tempted, you know, that old, that old barbershop on Murphy, it's on Murphy Street, but if you look at the CAD, that address to that barbershop is actually the resident on, what's the street from that comes from the church down? By, by, actually by where we park for our meetings.
It's not Fifth, it's an actual...
It's Fourth, I think. It's like 206 South Fourth.
Yep.
But yet, 206 is here, and the barbershop is over here on Murphy, but that's, so we really can't do anything with it, because we don't have the correct identification for that property for us to even demonstrate.
So it's, it's an interesting part of the dialogue, and this gets into all the nuances about how they're working their way through. So, the next two pages then are really what the discussion is aimed all about. And this is, as I mentioned earlier, input having received from a number of officials. One, meeting attendance guidelines for members who regularly miss meetings. And I know Maria, since she said on the Animal Advisory Board, you run into those issues, and we all have, will probably have had, because I know I have had people I've appointed, and people that volunteer sometimes show up, but don't show up. There's no mechanism right now for eliminating people. Today, if that order occurred, if someone doesn't show up, we council have to take action. The question is, is that what we want to do? Or do we want to give authorities to the chairs as our representatives, that if people don't show up, based upon some standard we want to set, that they would be the ones that come to council to recommend people change? Or do we want to give them authority to say, hey, Mr. Row, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to your appropriate council member and ask that, your thoughts, comments, perspectives?
I mean, I think we should let those heads take care of that issue. Otherwise, we'll be bombarded with all those people missing, and we're not just given to one person, one individual committee head, and let them handle it, and then bring it to us.
As few steps as possible. So, you know, if you just have to talk to one person, that makes it a lot easier, then I'm going to talk to you, and then talk to you, and then have another meeting about it. I don't know, but there's a few steps. But I think is the last one, you said would be coming, going directly to the city council person and saying, can you get a replacement to this person?
That's currently how it is, is that if I have chairs coming, they sort of show up, and I take the action. So, that is our current approach. Are we okay with that? If we are, fine, we need to make sure our chairs are aware of that, or we want to give the authorities to the chair to dismiss, but we retain the right, have the rights for the application of the table.
Yes, I like that. Also, I think that's good, too. The chair can say, I'm sorry, you couldn't have been coming, we're going to get somebody else, and then just, then what? Just say, hey, give me an idea.
Then go to the chair, I mean, then go to the, go to the council members, to say...
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. What do you think?
No fire with it, what we said. What I'm thinking about is, for all boards and commissions, maybe there is a need either within each individual group, or we should give them guidance as to what their mission and purposes. And we've had a lot of people come up and, and they basically share information as what they're, they're discussing and so forth, but it's not tied into any, what is the purpose of the group, of the, of the commission.
So we have done that on an annual basis, and not everyone shows up, but we have done that annually, and we give them an annual form of training. The last time it was done was July of last year.
And that's the other thing, is training, training on a local basis, where there's a chance of maybe earmarking a little bit of funding, and have either the chairs for each of the commissions or advisory boards to go out and train. TML offers some opportunities so that these folks might be able to attend and get, you know, better ideas and information, as well as newer insight as to what they're supposed to be doing.
I believe there's actually TML training online that you can access to.
Yeah, that's another one. We could also bring in a representative from TML.
Oh, you guys?
Provide some of that as well.
Some of our boards actually don't know what their definition is to represent, and planning and zoning is a perfect example. When we were going through the budget, you know, they were concerned about water, sewer, streets, you know, and, I mean, I was told that planning and zoning is to just recommend the zoning, that all of that, those other stuff would come through the manager, you know, they don't, they don't have to be concerned with that. And I may be wrong, I don't know if that's the case, but they're, they're, they're on that board to actually just work on the zoning for our city. All of the other stuff needs, falls back on the manager's lab, and he will determine whether, and he'll bring that to, to council, and tell you whether we have, yes, we have enough to cover the sewer, we have enough water, you know, to, to be able to get to them. And, and that's how some of the boards get confused, that, you know, they don't know what needs to come from that.
And I also appreciate, as far as the, to enhance communication between the council and the different advisory groups, being placed on the, on the monthly calendar agendas, that's good. Gives me an idea of when they're going to meet and so forth. But at the same time, I'm also now having a few meetings, and I'm getting emails from the chairpersons to, hey, we're having a meeting, you would like to welcome me to come in. And that's, that's good. So enhancing communications between the council and the board, and council and the public, because a lot of people out there have no idea that they even exist, and that's the issue why, purpose and statement. Mission statement is, in essence, they're out there representing the public as well to bring information to the board, so we can somehow act any possible. But they need that promotion, they need to...
Well, all of the meetings are posted, all of the agendas for all boards and commissions are posted on the website as well. And I put them on council members to give you an opportunity that if you want to attend, I mean, you can, you know, but sometimes people show, I mean, just hit and miss, but the opportunity is out there, and they know that these meetings are happening, because they're on the calendar, on the website.
And the minutes of the meetings are they posted also on the internet? So the people out there know what's going on?
On with the boards.
And the different commissions and advisory?
I don't know if they are, I think they are. But again, those are all just recommendations, so the minutes are really action items that you take. But then again, the majority of the boards, their action items to recommend Plan A, B, and C to council. So until council takes action on that, then that action will be in the council minutes. So everything's basically just a recommendation from your board.
Right now, there's not direct, in essence, communication or flow of information between the advisory boards and people residents.
Well, not because it's not an action item, but...
So they're acting as the other non-information basically for us?
Yep, they are.
Bring back to...
They are holding meetings, so many will attend, as I've, I've finished the, the planning and zoning, and the advisory, and I've, I've, you know, so everybody knows.
Some particular action items for the advisory board meetings, they can go out and invite special speakers, special...
Of course, yep, yep.
And they have full control of their agenda.
I'm wondering if we should send, like, two of these people just for them to post, like, certain meetings or something? Like, I know that there's a section on the newspaper where I see whatever's happening, just, like, I'm looking for the people.
Yeah, when they gather, posted on the agendas, I mean, on the city website, you'd be looking at some funding, be able to post them in the paper, because they will charge us for that. They charge us for everything we're going to do, everything. Do you have any recommendations on that?
See, I don't know how much it costs with, like, that, those, there's like a little spread up... See, I don't know how much it costs for, like, that, those, there's like a little spread on the newspaper where it says, this is, or what's happening.
Oh, it's like the wrong slides.
Yeah, something like that, and it just has, like, like it would say, Plan A and zoning, date, time, and where.
We get an event calendar or an event, a weekly event from the visitor center where it says, you know, Monday night, Guzzi's, you know, Rick, Reese's, I mean, maybe we could...
I think that would be a good place to start and adding the other side, too, is how do we engage our citizens to want to be involved? And I know, you know, Mr. Krasovschenko's here today. He certainly has a large group of people that he talks with and emails around community engagement. I'm starting to think, you know, some of these folks, you know, how do we bring them in and make sure they know, number one, that these types of meetings are available? But then also to help them find some sort of insertion point or injection point where they then raise their hand to whoever their counselor is in the board and say, hey, look, I'd like to participate in the Animal Advisory Board because I have, you know, fundamental love of pets and animals and what's going on there, or, you know, like airport, whatnot. So I think there's, there's definitely work to do there. I, you know, we talked in our council meeting about the property to city manager for that. That's another point, to really start gathering grassroots involvement from citizens. You know, those that are more active on social media, sometimes sharing that list, like the stuff that Ellen Melvin puts out, goes out on Twitter and Facebook and some of the other stuff, like Instagram as well. Getting folks to share that, so.
And also, my, the last one of you I have in mind is that we have six commissions and advisory boards operating now. Is there a possibility of maybe exploring and considering other groups? Like, for example, an arts and cultural advisory board, an economic development advisory board? To start looking at the future. Looking out by, we're a multicultural community and lots of talent and skills here. Somehow add a group that can go out and maybe draw information as to what we can do with arts and culture. And, you know, bring it up to council to... Just an idea.
We could probably look at that, but right now, we're having issues just filling the positions of the boards that we have now. I think Maria's heard that, I think she's got three openings right now on that. And no one has been able, we haven't been able to fill. Same way with, I believe, the, there's another one that's got one opening. Building and standards is missing the two alternates as well. So we're, we're having difficult filling the positions for the boards that we have now. Maybe we could get some, well, I was going to say volunteer, but the board's volunteer for it. But we could actually look into that. Because now we're going to put another board on, another board, the Hox, the Hox?
Yes, something.
I think that's a really great idea.
So, uh... So what I'm writing down is a result of discussion, calling backup. Any comments before I start giving perspective?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I hear comments.
No, that's what we do need, and we need to get more control of it because I know the housing, public housing, we had several issues here, people not showing up. That, my, huh? Yeah, till I got involved in this, I got a call, and you can give that to another meeting.
Oh, yes, you have board members that expired five, six, seven years ago.
And that's what, that's what we review, put in there forever, replace them. Yeah, thank city councils, yeah, at least for now. I mean, these communities need to report to us what's going on, you know, their membership, and who's showing up, who's not, and what they're doing about it. Things been way... Do you see anything else?
I do, I do like what the city charter says that the councils have the authority to appoint and remove anybody off the boards, and I would rather... Only because we may not know what that individual situation is, and maybe not a due, I mean... I mean, and, you know, we have so many people that, that we're likely to, even some of the boards. Because I've had people, like, I know that my group has missed a lot on, like, the Parks Board, and he's, he's actually been with certain other boards. So that, he couldn't get out of. I know that I, so and I texted him and said, we would be here, or he would be here, and he couldn't be. So maybe at that point, you need to probably either, so that he can attend all the meetings, then maybe make a schedule, or maybe find someone that can actually attend the meeting. Because I know for the Parks, he's missed seven meetings. Yeah, and so and I, I did have an alternate option for the boards. Because I own a lot of boards, but I basically say, okay, well, I can't be on this board because I already have a meeting here, so can we schedule a meeting for Thursday? And they normally work with you, but if I can't make it happen, then I just sit down. Because it's not fair for, like, Maria to sit on the board and she has to go out and work. Who else should go?
So clearly, I think where we're at amongst all of us, we council want to retain rights for appointment. We council want to have authority for termination. But I think the other part of that is, we council want to hear from our board and commission chairs relative to attendance, so we can make some real time assessments of the, I mean, that is part of our important, you know, of those commissions. Does that make sense? And Ramon, on the, on the notes about other boards and commissions, I've got that, I had that, like, the hot funding as well. And do we need to codify the annual training that we do? I would, I would offer, if you might have the opportunity, to read all of the background material of our organs, there's a lot in there. I don't think it's a regulatory issue that we have with people, it's they're not spending the time to do it. And we can certainly invite in others to do training from the outside or send people to train in. But they ought to be willing to go do it first, and I would not, before, and maybe the way to work it is, if we want to spend some of the money we have for travel, training on our own bodies, and something represents us, it'd be fine. For example, I look at, at Parks, you know, the, or, you know, building and standards, then the representatives that I'm involved with, that I've appointed, there's no question they're going to be working. There are some people who are representing more than I would not send anywhere because they've not demonstrated enough, in my mind, commitment to the program at work. So maybe that's an approach we'll take. We always seem to underrun the money we have allocated for our own training and travel. So we can probably allocate that to a board, that might just hurt.
They could build a TML convention. Because we got plans on there, and we have so many training sessions that actually pertain to our different groups.
I think we had better get people to do it if they actually came here and they had, just leave their house for a couple hours instead of, you know, leaving for the whole weekend.
Well, but this way, the way I look at it, they can also network with other people. Could I be a state, could I do this? I know we can do that. You know, then they see it on the screen, the training program they put up there. And then you get around, you make moving, and you, you network with other folks of those committees.
If you can get people that are voluntary to go.
Well, I mean, yeah, but they're, yeah, we can get them voluntary, it would be fantastic. They're in there, they're probably paid for, so it's not going out of their pocket. And we have retirees that sit on these boards also.
So maybe, like, if we send a servant, would they like, like, in-house or travel? So if they wanted to...
You know, right now, we're having issues just within the board and commissions. Because the building officials, and I was having this discussion with Eric, are putting out permits for buildings, there are metal buildings that are being put into the historic district, but have never come and had a dialogue with Plan A and zoning. So these permits are getting put out, and then the people that are in the historic district are not okay because they're preserving their properties. And then you have, I was only coming in with a huge metal building right in the middle of other, you know, of your district. And, but there's not the communication between the permit tag, the building official, or building and standards with Plan A and zoning. And those are all in our ordinances. And nobody knows what sits on their ordinances and what they can and cannot do. So we've got three or four buildings that shouldn't even be up because of the locations they're in.
I agree with you, Secretary. I was in Park today with a text back from a meeting. So I drove around the town, and I saw all these little signs stuck to cars, windows, and what have you, saying the Adobe. And what do I see? A little building next to an Adobe. And it offsets, you know, the historical meaning of those areas. And here, to me, I'm all about the Adobe. You know, we could tear down the little building down on Murphy Street. Got a bowl of Maddie, and she says, hey, we'll take care of that, so you don't tear it down. It is a historical, that grocery store that's there.
You know, but people come in and they want to cut a building, and instead of actually, you know, doing their homework and planning and zoning, looking at their stuff, building and standard to perfect tech, actually having an interaction with Plan A and zoning, they approve it, and they go off and they, they put the buildings up.
Well, they need to, you know, also get in contact. Eric can make sure that he knows about, you know, he's been to that.
They need to get familiar with their ordinances, that's what they need to do.
So hopefully, we'll get a new planning director and work now. We'll go back and try out the distance. So we have roughly thirty-five to forty members or volunteers. If we start paying for their travel, with TML, what's possible with TML?
About eighteen to two thousand dollars.
So I'll use the low number, thirty-five times two, that's seventy thousand dollars. We only have amongst us twenty thousand dollars for all of them. So I would not be fit for, I'm saying, we're sending that to a TML.
Well, I'm not saying that much, but just a selective...
As soon as you do one.
Yeah, I understand.
All going to say, I'm entitled to that.
And we need to, like, get perfect there, because not all of Cosmo's to the TML.
I make it perfectly clear, Mayor, I'm responsible for my four thousand. My man is that, and whether I choose to spend or not. But as soon as you, we're going to have to go and take our travel money, and have to trip it to be able to come, because I don't know how I would say, hey, you can go, but you can't go.
But, I mean, you don't send, like, your chairs, you don't send everybody.
Well, I just heard those, chairs as well as all the members.
No, all the chairs should go, they should be trained.
I agree that with Cosmos, even the cost could be high. But there are other alternatives that, as Cynthia mentioned, the internet. You might find some potential resources out there where people can log in and get information as to the different commissions and advisory boards. The other thing is inviting specialists from TML or some other sources that can come and, and share information with the boards. Or the other is some better tie between the boards and Colorado State University. We have people at the University who are specialists wishing to deal with historic restorations that could work stronger with building and standards, so they can be informed as to, you know, at least get a potential idea of what's historic out there. If we're taking any action, they can assess and maybe, or at least have a source to go to for information.
So I agree, as you recall, we council got a presentation from the historic folks at the Soros. I invited them to go do building and standards, they never have. So it's a bit frustrating when people raise an issue amongst us as council, particularly regarding the Adobe, and they'll take the action that we asked them to do.
So whether Texas Historical Society or Commission, they've got specialists for every...
All of them, yep, all of them, yep. So if we focus on, bring us back to meeting attendance. We want to retain guidance and authority for appointment and dismissal and will ask the community chairs, the board commissioners, who can help us. Can you run that there where we are? Make sense?
One other piece, and I like where it flows with that commission chair or board chair giving, giving the feedback back to the individual counselor over that area. Because there may be some extenuating circumstance that, that requires a reset. The other thing I think is important, is to talk to folks in the community about getting on a board or commission, is before they say yes, understand, we need you to devote five to eight hours a month to education, review, contemplation, and stipulate an hour long. So, and give people, a lot of people, it's hard to say no sometimes, right? So if a counselor asks you, do you serve on this? Sometimes they say yes, when, you know, we really need them to think through their schedule and say, can I devote, you know, five to eight hours? Even just showing up to the meeting isn't really being active on that floor. They need to, to do some homework ahead of time. If you're on the planning and zoning commission and there's two or three properties being contemplated, they need to get in the bucket and go review that property ahead of time. They can talk with a couple neighbors about what, what that means in that area. So I, I think we can all help articulate that and share that with folks as they're contemplating. I mean, the board's, hey, this is a five to eight hour a month.
I'm curious, on the, like, on the planning and zoning, I know that we had, I had a notebook that had our ordinances or stuff, I think that got, are they, do they have? We don't, they're online. There was a couple that actually have downloaded and made their own, their own notebooks.
That's what I did, I just printed it out, stuffed it in a notebook. A lot of, a lot of the people that are online worked in that system, because we need to refer to it all the time.
Why, I'm assuming they don't have a computer?
I know, it doesn't have a computer.
I'm just saying, I'm just, not everybody has one.
I mean, if they didn't, and they couldn't print one, I'd be happy to print one for somebody on my board if they needed it. It's, you know, thirty pages, I don't know.
And, and that's why these supporting documents are important. Because you review your packet three, four days before the meeting, so if there's any questions, you have that discussion prior to the meeting, and that eliminates you having to sit through a Plan A and zoning for two hours. You know, because if you have the questions, you come to the manager, you have the discussion, or you go to the chair of the Plan A and zoning, you have the discussion, you've done your homework. So instead of going to the meeting and flipping through, oh, it's, oh, by the way, this is, this, 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 all of that should have already been discussed and resolved, so that they can move on faster. And I think that would increase the participation for the boards and commissions. When I was in Ward Two, and Councilor Lebus knows that, I mean, Parks, we had four or five, I used to fill it like every, three, four weeks. Because they would do that, they would say, oh, they don't want to tell me no, but they come in and then they see it's a lot of work, and they drop. I mean, Councilor Lebus has had, what, more people come to and go? And we have another one on the agenda for tonight, you know, I mean, so...
So maybe that is another thing to bring up, is training.
So I, there's two takeaways in my view, and I just reflect. What is, because I do this with all those IAS members, I have a checklist that I walk through. I'd be happy to just put that down on a piece of paper so it's more, more than my chicken scratch, and share with everyone, so that we as council members can walk through that. I mean, I went through that with Marcy, that, Marcy and I spoke a lot about Parks first. Who is she? What's she about? What's her motivation? Why does she want to be on Parks? Not, why do I want her on Parks? Why does she want to be on Parks? And when you start that discussion, that's the end point, it changes the whole dialogue. So I'd be happy if that's worthwhile, and pull that together, bring that back in, and we can use that and improve on it. The second item, while, and I admit, I'm old, I like paper. I'm pretty good at using the digital tools, because I usually have things, give all my travel... additional tools because I usually have things and give all my travel, everything lives in this document on iPad. But you've seen me come in many times with my notebook for my Ward Five position with all my documents. I do think we ought to put that together hard copy for those who sell in the boards and commissions. What I, you know, I chair the Bristol County Assessment District Board right now. And we did that, and it made a huge difference in our game time, about what we do from the, because people got it, we walked through it, it's part of our presentation. So maybe that's just something we need to do, but I think it'll be up to us as council members, I mean, someone quits, we're gonna have to say, I need your notebook back because I'm giving you a replacement. And it is the documents, most recent agendas, it's the ordinances, when they're done, and I'm simply happy to look and do it with those.
And there's actually on the, this is the Secretary of Court Association, there's a notebook that gets sent to us every year, and there's actually applications in there for every board and commission for your city. And it basically tells you, who are you and why do you want to serve this board? And you list it, and then we present those to council. Council, you know, or your Ward Five, or Ward Two, whatever, present it to them, and then they decide who would be the best fit for that board and commission.
So maybe as part of that, and I know we've got one tonight, one that's in the issue tonight, although I asked, I asked Kirsten, after a week and a week, Representative Yerkes of the Parks and Chilwell, this individual, and to understand motivations and all that, just to make sure she is, chair was up to speed, we walk back and forth on that. But maybe if we as members want to appoint someone, we ask them to come to a council meeting, and we get the opportunity to talk with them. Do you think that chases them away?
Yes.
But you rather chase them away and not show up?
Okay.
And I would like, like, like the Maybait, a little spread, like, just a little sloppy hop.
Just want to come.
Yeah, I've been in Maria's too, and she does a forum, we just kind of sit and visit anyway after we were there. But it's difficult to get people to actually come and participate and do the hundred percent. You know, some of them just want to sit because they don't want to, you know.
Yeah, we've had so many meetings that we couldn't make a forum, and then, you know, we hadn't, we've been dealing with an actual animal issue, and people that aren't on the board have been upset with me because I haven't been able to make a forum, and they're mad at me, like, I'm not doing what I'm supposed to be doing because the other members won't show up. So I'd just be happy if anyone showed up, so we can do what we're supposed to be doing.
So we maintain the ability to appoint and remove. We'll ask the chairs to give us updates. I'll take the action and work with Cynthia and Eric to put together an interview checklist and share it. We'll talk about boards, or notebooks rather.
Can we also add that, I think from a city perspective, Cynthia and I can put out applications to people.
Oh, that's great.
To see if we can garner, garner people that are interested in serving on the boards.
And maybe the survey that Councilor Escobar requested, that maybe just the survey, put it out there and they can tell us exactly what it is that they want to come out of these boards or why they want to be on these boards.
We'll put that, put that in the application.
Yeah. Maria, you may have a totally different idea than we're going to have. So if we get that survey in, we can actually balance out what we need.
Mayor and Pecus, they've done things like advertising newspapers, opening on boards and commissions, and put it on the way to you.
Well, the hospital districts had their position on for like six months.
There's a problem, that can be a response.
But it's been filled.
Something also to consider in the spirit of discussion is offering some sort of a incentive or regulatory advantage to the boards and commissions. Like, the last time we went with the, when we got an update from the planning and zoning board, and they in essence said, hey, if we had five thousand dollars, maybe we could start working on a basic GIS system. If we somehow get them to start planning for what their needs are, to get money, it may help to spur them active, to be more active as well.
Yeah, so that's item number three alone, we can talk about that now. There is a, and our audience already, we have two of the boards and commissions that we are supposed to include in the budget process. Okay, and you heard from the airport advisory board, they're supposed to be included. And they made a very strong point about coming to be included and told us. We just raised a lot about the planning and zoning, that was on their own initiative. My view on that one is we need to add a line in each of the boards and commissions that they're included in the budget process and make recommendations to council.
Next, the parks was also wanting to be a part of the budget.
Parks was to, I mean, Kirsten and Marcy were all part of that, there's a point here. So that one sounds like an easy one, we'll just put in, I won't have language for that. Okay?
I think somewhere on the, the survey or the, or the application actually, that we need to put the, it doesn't have to be, they don't have to be from a certain one to serve on those boards.
Oh, yeah, that was past two years ago.
That way, so they have it there, you know.
They pass that, yeah. They don't have to be on a specific board.
So like Ramon is talking, and she's teaching someone in the parks, so he can go over by the high school and pick someone, and he doesn't need to be in your ward, but if you can find someone outside that, then that's fine.
Yeah, because they're sort of all city, you know, we don't worry about personal city.
And then one last item I'd like to bring up, and we need to keep in mind, Alpine, fifty one percent of the residents in Alpine right now are Hispanic and or other minorities. We need to get them to get active minimum government. Question is how?
They won't do it.
The question is how? What haven't we explored or experimented with to try to get them to do that? They won't come here because they're, this in essence, to be honest with you, intimidates me. But there are other means and ways of doing it out there and in the residents' communities. But we just need to explore.
When I was on council, I actually walked the street in Ward Two and knocked on doors and asked them, what do you want to see, what isn't that you need? And you know what I was told? I don't care what you do in Ward Two, just make sure I have running water and you pick up my trash. That's all they wanted.
Don't come back to my door.
And just don't leave your mic back.
Kirsten, you started with your, I think Councilor Escobar started with your town hall meetings. And I think we need to deal with, that's where you come on, you explain to them, we've got these boards, we've got these commissions.
We did this away.
This is like, yeah, just lay back. So this, you know, I started in town hall meetings when I came on council five years ago. And I watched the tenants decline, decline, decline. That's why I do the radio show. Okay, that's the only way, and I tell you, there are several hundred people now that are listening to the radio show.
Yeah, they've asked me, can you copy, we want to get on there, so I just copy and said, yeah, you can get it.
So I think we have to figure out what goes in each of our boards. I love the representation of this council. We have four minorities here. Okay, so representation is pretty good, given the two-thirds of most of us, including council mayor, are the boards.
The Rivian Top Show ideas, I think it's good.
It's pricey though.
I paid for it, it's pricey. Maybe we should consider looking at budgets. I'd be happy to go on radio and talk in Spanish. Ninety-hundred eleven.
Well, so Martin has offered for us and the rest of you to come onboard as well, not on a regular basis. So I pay for it, advertise and all that, but he has said, because he does a show, his second cup of coffee, it is, and he's offered to have people come onboard.
Tell him to send us a headline.
No, 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 email, go see him.
Better go see him.
Go call Martin. When's the last time you knocked on Martin's phone, go see him? He's there every morning.
It's like a ten minute interview or something, right?
It's a ten minute interview, yeah. It's a great opportunity. It's a great opportunity. And he has it not only in English, he also has a Spanish version, go on, what they do at the pound, music on Sunday. He's wonderful at that. Part of what Martin is trying to do when he bought KPLF and KAL was in fact outreach to the community. He's happy with that. But how will he, like everyone else, how else can he go on? He just has to rely on it.
Again, the other thing is, so it's kind of in the evenings, for like eight, six to eight or something like that. Then you could probably sit in on that as well, but again, those spots need to get paid for. Now, at, for the Sundays, it's free.
I think the second cup, the PJ, it's free.
Yeah, it is. Yep, so, okay, so we've talked about this, getting a budget process on the line there. And listen, this was yours to increase membership to allow for alternates. I think the question we have to ask ourselves is what would be minimum for forum? In part, when I go back and look at, I'm about to go back to page four. We define forum based upon the number of members. For example, planning and zoning has seven members. We could change it to five with two alternates, and therefore forum would be three. Okay, on animal advisory, you could change animal advisory to be five representative age boards with the alternates that include the humane society, and you get forum three. That may be another approach, rather than everyone having to be there. And so we have, I think, some flexibility to go work that. You either add more people on to make them alternates, like you said, building standards. Building and standards makes forum. They got five members, they got two alternates, and people want to drop the alternates, step ready?
So if we were gonna make a change like that, would that be something that the board itself would say, yeah, we don't really need like the humane society person here, let's make it, you know, seven members and then we need four to show up or whatever? Or like you're saying, add them as the alternates, the vet and the, the humane society as an alternate, and make it smaller? Or is that something that we would decide and just give the information to the board?
No, we'd decide, no, we'd have to, we'd have the ordinance that created the board.
We have to take the action, I would think, for example, in animal advisory, would that be a great discussion amongst them, just to say, we're not making a forum.
So we could recommend it.
So right, that, what the board would say, hey, this is something that we'd like to do, we'll just let the council think.
Council's approved by them, that's correct, yeah. And that, the awards change. Yeah, see, well, because that's what they looked and said, they want to be eight members. But if you can't do a forum, and your approach is, then you say, it's five representative age board, and the others are alternates? And we write in the language that alternates can participate in the event all the member members are on.
And then you just sequence out who's first alternative and who's second alternative.
Exactly.
Because like if the animal you've got, the veterinary, the humane society, then you have the actual animal control.
She doesn't count as part of the forum, she just has to show up.
She doesn't.
Not voting.
You could. So just think about this, today is not a Jennifer's night, but remember, the animal advisory board has no legislative powers. It is an advisory board and make recommendations to council. You may, Jennifer's voice is as good as anyone else's.
She's the person that we, we.
Of course.
Well, then she should be.
Yeah, so that gives you the flexibility. So it's not us, I don't want to work it, but I think animal advisory board, Maria, I think you're walking away with some good thoughts to go work on.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Maybe the certification should go down to five and three.
Yeah, I would go down to five and three, and let's see when we get a utilities director on board and start getting that one back up. Because the focus where they're working on the floor is water and water utilization and all of that.
Yeah, we have a big push again from Dr. Banson.
Yep.
Disengaging from our conservation district and how they're trying to map out water consumption, water usage, well levels. Conservation district just approved some remote monitoring devices to look, and yeah, I think, I think there's some real headway to do.
So on this one, it probably makes sense for us to go nubile on this and get some feedback. Maria, you'll get some feedback, and then while I put it on for Rollins or next meeting, Maria, when you all get it.
We'll do it next week.
So.
Right. Yes.
Call the name.
Yes.
So it makes sense to put this as an information discussion for October fifteenth?
Yes.
I'll just put that on the table and we'll, we'll talk about it, okay?
Yeah, put this on our agenda.
Okay.
What about the parks board?
I'll get into that, I'm not there yet. We're still going, that's okay. Guidance needs chapters regarding sending information to members and potential toll and implications. So this is a question.
Yeah, I'm gonna put together a sort of abbreviated toll, instructions for the board members based on the board, based on the instructions or lesson that the attorney general does. And I'll give it in person to each board and give them the attorney general, open meetings handbook, and give them a little cheat sheet of things to watch out for, so everybody will end up having the required open meetings training, but it'll be done in a way where hopefully the receiving will not be two boards up here.
So the specific question raised on this, and that'll be very helpful, the specific question raised on this was by Kirsten Lee, her concern is, what is a chair allowed to give to board members and not? Does tolla preclude them getting information? There's this rumor that they can only get information in the meeting itself as opposed to ahead of time. My view is, you know, like all rumors and outline, they start somewhere based upon some piece of fact and then they work along their way. But there are some board chairs who are concerned about violation of toll. So if you can cover that in your presentation, get them latitude, that'll help a lot.
I'll cover that, and just briefly, in the bottom of that, it's not gonna be a toll violation to give everybody extra information, as long as it's given to everybody. You don't gotta give it to two members or three members, you want to give it to everybody. Certainly want to give them the information that's only a difference.
And you give it to all the members, yeah. Okay, because they're, they're wanting to share information about what's going on here, what's going on there, and they've been hesitant to do that because of concerns about toll.
So when would that, when would that meeting take place?
We were gonna do it today on some of it, but I've got a schedule with Cynthia, and I'll schedule.
We actually had the discussion, and I was hoping that we could actually get all the positions in the boards filled. And that way we could train everyone at the same time, and then when we actually fill the director positions as well, get them trained as well, so that he doesn't have to repeat this three different times.
I've got the slide presentation from the chief of the attorney general's open meetings division, and it's the slide presentation that she gives to people. So I'll use that as my basis for my talk to the boards.
So judging by your perspective, Eric, do you think you would have recommendations of filling positions by a member?
No, there are no methods.
So maybe Cynthia, you could put on, on agenda in the light of the timeframe, that'll be an opportunity for us as council to clean up any ordinance issues that we go off and work, and then it's probably, experience in the past, where it's been kind of like a two-hour workshop, covering toll and working all the way through that, and then working through the education for all the boards and commission members that said that we did a year ago.
That's about right. It's about an hour for toll, and then probably an hour to go through what that specific board is supposed to do, to make sure they understand the board, that's, if you had all board, that's sort of part of it.
And what we've done in the last, I brought in copies for each board and commission, their specific ordinance, so I brought in six piles of stuff, and then we've covered kind of top level and then walked through each of theirs as well. So if you work that, Cynthia, that'd be good. Okay, the next one on here, again, in general, how to include recommendations on the city council agenda. This one, one out, PNC was in Mashpee, airport advisory board, I live in Mashpee and Parks, and recreation hasn't been in Mashpee, so maybe it's just about giving the rest of them some confidence, says, come on, we can work that, but if we include them in the budget process, that will go a long ways down that path. That make sense? Okay, and then let's go on the next page, specific recommendations. It said Kirsten wanted to increase members to allow representation from Solos and AISD. Said Kirsten wanted to increase members to allow representation in Solos and AISD. Given the strategy we've talked about for animal advisory board, maybe what we would want to do is on parks and recreations, do something similar, make them alternates, but devoting members, they don't have the forms. That make sense? And I'll post new recommendations on that, sessions coming up.
It could also be ex officio or alternates, so there's a slot there for Solos, there's a slot there for AISD.
Yeah, the only concern would be, if they're ex officio, then to allow the question, can they vote or can't they?
Well, it has to be specific and how you all say it.
Yeah.
We all like that.
We're gonna want them to be able to vote, you know, because again, we're the ones that make final decisions, so we're gonna want them not get stuck in the mire. And then allow membership to include individuals who work in the city but don't own property nor live in the city. So today, we require, it used to be you had to live in the city, then we expanded it to say if you own property in the city, then that was sufficient to be on a board or commission. The only exception to that is in fact the airport advisory board, since it serves a wider audience. The question is, we want to allow membership to those who work in the city but don't own property nor live in the city.
I say yes to that.
I'm sorry?
I, I think that's a great idea.
So they have to work in the city?
Not for the city.
Not for the city.
In the city.
Well, what about, I don't know, maybe not even work, because there's a lot of people that are retired that live out in, you know, Double Diamond, they don't, they're not city residents, but they would, they volunteer to do different things. I know I have a couple of people that I work with on other boards that are, don't work. Kathy, Kathy Coleman. Mm-hmm. I'm an ex, Kathy Coleman, she's not, she's, she's on a couple of other boards that I'm on.
Yeah, I, I would tell you, the airport advisory board, there may be two that live in the city or operate in the city, the rest live outside. The airport advisory board is going like gangbusters. So I have, I act a bit unconflicted because of.
Brewster County.
Skin in the game.
Just open it.
But having skin in the game, but if they are willing to spend time on what's important city, my recommendation is, yeah, why not?
You have, Eric? I was thinking, do you, do you look at a particular radius? Is it fifteen miles to twenty miles? Is it thirty miles? If you hit thirty, then you start picking up Fort Davis or Marathon, but if you keep it at twenty, then you probably really, you catch the late Double Diamond and Sunny Line.
Yeah. So, well, you just said, maybe another approach is that you work in the city or volunteer, because not everyone works, or volunteer to entity that's in the city.
And, and or live within a twenty mile radius of Alpine.
Okay. Yeah, twenty miles, right. Okay? That work?
Yeah.
You all okay with that?
That excludes Marathon and Marathon.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or volunteer.
Volunteer or live within a twenty mile radius. No? Yes, no? Good, okay. Andy, you go on that?
Yeah, the only, the only question I have is, if we do the twenty mile, we'll be Vol. 8, Jeff Davis. And that could be Brewster County within twenty miles to, to make it Brewster County.
Oh, because we weren't going to Jeff Davis.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so, okay. Ready? Okay? Uh, okay, we'll, we'll craft something and we'll try and fill that outline here night and scheme and plot and make sure we got the right language in order. Yeah. Okay? And the next one, building and standards. So this is probably what Cynthia, you, Ron, and I need to talk about. It's the one, building and standards is trying to work. Their struggle is, they have multiple properties, they want to be able to do a, by property as opposed to public hearings, presentation, and all that stuff. So we need to make sure, Cynthia needs to make sure, you need to make sure.
Actually, the last meeting they had was that they had agreed to have just three properties per agenda.
Yeah, so they can expand beyond three though, because my sense is, things, as things start picking up.
That's a substandard building, a dilapidated building?
Correct.
Yep, yep, yep.
So that's the commission that hears those initially?
They hear those, and they would like to be able to have, here's the case, let's hear from anyone concerned who wants to talk about it, who's the owner, have the building inspector talk about it, and then render a decision, and then go on to the next one. As opposed to having everyone talk about all of the properties and then go into, then enter the building inspector, then render a decision.
Yeah, they have to run three public hearings, have the owners respond to the public hearing, and then they go to the action items.
Is the decision of them appeals to the, to the city council?
No, it does not appeal to us, it has to go to district court.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so they are a judicial body.
Yes.
And that's why they want to run it that way, as you would normally do in case, in case law, you have a case by case.
We're setting up a, we're proposing a judicial step to take this, because in Texas, cities can take a dilapidated building and they could tell the building owner to fix it.
Correct.
Let them fix it, then fire it. They don't fix it. Finally, the city can go tear it down, put a lien on the property.
Yes.
For the cost of tearing it down.
That's all in place.
But then, but then it stops there, the, all the city does is have a lien, they can't do anything. There's another step that cities can take to actually take ownership of the property after a year and then be able to sell it, like the Texas.
Okay.
So I'll discuss that in all of that period of time, in that, that could actually clean up a lot of the property buildings in Alpine.
Yep.
Well, we're all the way to the step where we take lien, we demolish the property, and that's the extent we go to. So we're, we're there.
Yeah.
There's one, there's one extra step that can be taken legally in Texas, well, I can explain you all.
That'd be good. First step will be help them get their genus sorted out and work the second one, because that will be where the ordinance changes more. Ramon?
Yeah, I think the focus on each property, one at a time, is important, because it gives the, the commission time to focus on historic context.
Yep. We agree with that. Yep. That makes good sense.
Stay, well, also allows that hearing to be either done by the city council or by the, the court.
Well, no, it's them.
Right, in Texas, Alpine's, Alpine's charter, yes, but I'm saying that Texas law also provides ultimate hearing.
Yeah, we made a decision not to do that, because we didn't want to get in the mire and all that stuff, and we didn't want to, and if they go to district court, they are district court. Okay, next is the one you brought up, Parrot Hat Committee. What are our thoughts about that? Do we want to, want to put it, do we want to work that? And as you would do that, Eric, they would kind of put together, what, what would you recommend there?
So, Chris and I were discussing it. One of the things that comes up relative to how we distribute funds for events is, how do you get a little bit more involvement from key participants who are forming events or the hoteliers, as far as that final recommendation that goes to council for budget approval? And, you know, he and I thought, you know, if we had a committee, say it was represented by five different folks, one from each ward, and then maybe two hoteliers or something, it would be a committee of seven, that is, we're working through the budget process and making the recommendations on the funding of the events. Those people come together, Chris and I would be ex officio, so we would help guide the discussion, pull together, look at final recommendation, then goes to council for the distribution of those funds. They certainly would meet, once during the budget process, and then another time a year, if you need to hear, applications that come in, that group can, can come back together, look at how we're trending on our revenues, and then is there additional funding that could be allocated for worthwhile events? You know, certainly, I think the hoteliers would want to be involved, and then there are a couple other people in the community that are heavily engaged in event forming. And it would take the onus off of Chris, somewhat take the onus off of me relative to that, and it would place that recommendation in the hands of folks that are really engaged. Because, you know, we think about the vibrancy in the town, right, and all these events that are happening, and, and many people with similarly great ideas, and just get them more engaged. I, I think that board would be easier, Phil, than others. I mean, my sense is we would have people lining up wanting to, to be on that. And then certainly engaging the hoteliers, you know, I say hold at least two spots for hoteliers, but all seven, maybe, people, either hoteliers or event planners or, or mayor.
Seven now, remember you had Airbnb, these two, so you don't have to draw straws.
Right, yeah. But that's where, you know, council would each have, you know, one, one spot that they recommend, maybe a couple other, at large, maybe, you know, the mayor recommend a couple, and then approve that one, so.
Does that make sense? So you want to go draft the document?
I will.
That be good?
Perfect.
Okay? Okay? Uh, okay. We're close to running out of time, we might need a bio, right? But that's where I have on the list, is that okay? 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 So actions, I'll work with Cynthia, put some notes together, and get them out to everyone, and then we'll have a discussion for sure on the animal advisory board on the, the, the information discussion standing there, and we'll get your feedback, and then we'll start looking through our list. And eventually into the ordinance changes that we need, because we will need ordinance changes, the, the, the championship that we talked about, the expanding that, we talked about approach for boards and commissions. And, you know, the hot funding one, so we've got some things to, to work. Rudolph, you? Go back to you. Would you want to take a recess?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay?
Five minutes. Five minutes, yeah.
Okay? Go back to you.
We've got one to work.
Just long enough for a cigarette.
So, just.
Given to, that the city council, City of Alpine will hold a regular meeting at five thirty PM on Tuesday, October one, twenty nineteen, in the council chambers, eight oh three, West Hall in City of Alpine, Texas, for the purpose of considering the tax agenda. The notice is supposed to be posted to Texas Open Meeting Act, section five five one dot oh four three, Texas Government Code. Public notice, the use of cellular phones are prohibited in the city council chambers during meetings of the city council. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council during public hearings and during action items. Please speak into the microphone at the podium, state your name and address. If you have, should also be an address, and if you have petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the city secretary, state law, John prohibits council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule a topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call point of order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. The call is speaking to the board, we'll have the invocation, and it will be Michael Wallace, Brother Reverend Mike McDonald. Let us settle our hearts for just a moment in prayer. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of Alpine. Help this council to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Give this council and all of us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide this council to be the leaders your people need. Help them see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with them, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, God, renew all of us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your daughters and sons, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all. Honor and peace on behalf of the citizens of Texas. Reverend. Senator. Do we have a forum?
Mayor, we do have a forum, and the notice is supposed to be two PM on September fourth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, have you all noticed that the last meeting we had public comments, and you're limited to three minutes, is there anybody that wishes to speak? See none, then go ahead and move forward. We don't have any presentations or recommendations today, and reports will start with, I don't have a report, and city manager, you can move forward.
Yes, sir. Okay, Mayor.